Good evening, everyone. Like to welcome you to the regular Board of Alderman meeting for April 9th. Uh, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
To the republic which stands.
One nation, one nation.
Under God.
Uh.
In his own liberty and justice for all.
For all.
All right, I'm gonna start by saying we failed miserably because were we supposed to have somebody do the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And of course.
Dr. Tobacco is working on it.
Of course, he did a terrible job again tonight, so this is all my reason to do what's the last month for future. Um. Okay, so, uh, before we start, uh, before we actually take roll call, I just want to, uh, make two notes. Uh, we're using the second revised agenda, the one that's stamped, uh, 2:27 PM. And also one correction on executive session. I don't know how it made it through all those versions, but executive session number three is a, is a typo and, and should just be deleted completely. It doesn't make any sense. Um, so just take that off. Um, so we'll have one, two, four for executive session. Uh, with that, uh, Trish, roll call.
All right, aldermen and women, Kings.
Here.
Farrar.
Here.
Adamowski. Tar.
Here.
Cassetti.
Here.
Genetti.
Here.
Knapp.
Here.
Hardy.
Here.
Yaman.
Here.
Rivers.
Here.
Mamon.
Here.
Short.
Here.
Levinsky.
Here.
Duranty.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Who are the two, uh?
I have King and Adamowski as absent.
Oh, King is here.
Okay.
King is here.
I'm here.
Here, so we have.
Thirteen, one.
Thirteen and one.
All right, I declare a quorum. Uh, we have minutes for approval from the previous meeting, March 12th, uh, 2024.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Yam and who was the second round that I missed it?
Second.
Second by Rivers. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right.
Excuse me, Josh, uh, Trish, I, um, I, I think I missed a roll call. I just wanted to, it to be noted that I'm here.
Perfect.
Yeah, fourteen.
Fourteen aldermen. Thanks, Steve. Uh, all right, most carries, um, all right, move on to public session. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight?
I would.
All right, so just a quick reminder, three minutes or less, one time speaking, and please identify yourself for any follow-up or for, for the public record.
Uh. Sure. My name is Tracy Brickett, eighteen Winter Street, Ansonia, Connecticut. I'm here in regards to the Board of Rec for soccer. According to your ordinance, two point six seven and two point seven zero, I have a few questions. We have ninety-six kids playing for three teams from fifteen and nineteen. They're getting between a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty dollars a kid. That gives them a grand total of fourteen, eight, one, zero. They're paying out one thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars for insurance and registration. They're paying out about three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five for referees, linemen's. That gives them a grand unaccounted amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two, uh, eight hundred, eighty, eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven with two hundred dollars, two thousand dollars the city's giving. One, two, they use the Ansonia High School soccer name. They went to CFC. They had sixteen kids play at a hundred dollars a kid. That gave them sixteen hundred dollars. It only cost them nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. That was including insurance and referees. And again, unclaimed amount of six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Number three, if the city is giving any money to any program, why is it that the city of Ansonia has no say in how this is being run? If this is an independently run program, why aren't they paying for our fields? Because they are ruining our fields. Number four, um, after I brought this to the meeting on Thursday with a few of the people, they, um, they are now going to Ryan Fields, and from my understanding, from a very reliable source, here in Ansonia, we are paying for them to go now to Ryan Field. And number five, we, I was also told by a couple of the aldermen and women that, um, if I didn't like the way the program's being run, that I should go somewhere else. According to CGS guidelines, you're not allowed to have more than two out-of-towners on a team without permission from both our director as well as the director of the town that they're going to. I have three girls that play on the same team. I cannot go out of town. And it is out of control. And as I was told during CGSA, soccer is no longer the poor man's sport. It's the rich man's sport. And unfortunately, it doesn't cost anybody ten thousand dollars to run a program and to get fields, um, of goal equipment as well as soccer equipment. No way. So where is all this unaccounted money going to? Also, I was just advised today from my brother that the tennis courts have been destroyed up at Nolan Field. That's all I have, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, and, uh, Trish, did you get, uh, the address, name and address on that?
I'll be happy to answer it.
You have it. Eighteen Winter Street.
Yes.
Thank you.
Tracy.
Uh. Can I speak? Who else from the public?
Uh, this is Jeff Bryce with Ansonia Soccer.
Sure. Uh, name and address, or address, please?
Uh, for La Rova Terrace.
Thank you.
Uh, so I'm the president of Ansonia Soccer. I, I represent our volunteers, players, parents, and families of the program. We've spent the last two years trying to build this program into a fun, inclusive, and affordable program. Since I've become president, this program has more than doubled in registration. I'm not claiming I did it alone. The board, volunteers, and families of Ansonia have helped grow this program through the years. While we have grown in numbers, our field space has contracted. We had access to the top field at Avestone on Colony Road and the two fields at Nature Center. Avestone Park is continually flooded, and two years ago was, was so bad, we had to move our whole program to Nature Center. This has come with its challenges. His parking is tight, scheduling is difficult, and fields take a beating since we cannot rotate with the added capacity. It is not sustainable for our increasing numbers. We come across another challenge in the spring as many high school players come play in our U-19 league. This, this spring, we saw the most registration we have ever witnessed and ended up with enough players to fill six rosters. We split them up into five teams and needed three fields to handle the capacity. We have our field in the Nature Center, Charger Field at the high school, and I asked for Nolan Field since there is no football on the field in the spring. Asking for Nolan created hostility against me and the Ansonia soccer program. We were interrogated about why we let so many kids register and why we offer two seasons. I do not feel I have to explain why I would rather these kids play sports outside, and if soccer was what they choose, then so be it. I suggest, they suggested I take away from these kids because I have been handcuffed into using only one facility. To appease the Board of Education, since they do not want soccer at Nolan Field, the town offered to pay Derby for us to use the turf field. Well, this is a serious upgrade for our players. The fact that they were asked to vacate their hometown and had to waste taxpayer money is a sad situation for Ansonia. Soccer will not do any damage to Nolan, and we had to waste taxpayer money, and it would be far less to maintain than what we paid to Derby. Also, the money we paid to Derby could have been used to help expedite the construction to rebuild Avestone, so I can finally move soccer back there. If Avestone is not repairing, the lower surface not resurfaced by the fall, I will be in the same predicament in the spring of twenty-five. I do not feel that paying Derby year after year when we have a perfectly good field that goes unused in the spring. It is a real shame the Board of Ed has the power to force the hand of the town and makes the taxpayers spend money in an unnecessary manner. I ask that we have permission to use Nolan for soccer activities in springtime seasons. Our registration numbers are increasing, and we cannot continue to be pushed around and funneled down to one complex. There, these are residents of the town whose children are being treated as if they do not belong here. Our fields need a regular maintenance plan, one where someone is held accountable. I'm tired of other towns coming to Ansonia and seeing only our fields in disarray. Please help the residents of Ansonia and the players of Ansonia Soccer Club. Help us have fields we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Um, anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
I would. My name is Claudia Degnan. I live at thirteen Glen Drive in Ansonia. And I'm having a pa, a problem with the Nature Center gardens. I've been a gardener for, in the vicinity of thirteen, fourteen years. And, um, the, um, president, who is illegally president, the, our rules and regu, regulations say that you can only be president one year, and then somebody else has to take it the next year. You can get voted again every other year. But he's been continuously president since before I started. He took one of my plots away. He ripped up my tarps. And he, um, gave my plot to somebody else. He, there's empty plots that he could have used, but he wants to give them a clean one. I'm seventy-eight years old. Why do I have to do his dirty work? I'd like somebody to help me get my plot back, and, and the, the man that's president is Pat Evans, and I'd like him to try and follow the rules himself.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board tonight?
Oh, great. Is this how every meeting is?
No, I think the first one in a while.
Anyone else in the public, second call?
Uh, yeah, Matthew Fruge, seventeen Caroline Street. I'm still, uh, I'm stepping forward to talk about the soccer league as well. Um, I find it very concerning, uh, that we have what I believe is a, a city field, Nolan Field, uh, sitting vacant for two-thirds of the year. And our youth aren't allowed to, or it's, it's seeming very hard to get them to be able to play soccer on that field. Um, and another thing that's concerning is reading the referendum that was just passed this past year. It's, it's calling for that field to be multi-use, multi-sport use field. So, uh, it looks like we're already at a challenge of getting that multi-use right there when, uh, it seems to be only stuck on football. Um, and it, a question, you, I know you don't have to answer it, but i- is that a city field or is that a Board of Ed field? Because, uh, seems like it's Board of Ed field by the way it's being treated.
The city field.
It's not just. So, oh, there's plenty of people in there. Can.
That it?
Excuse me, Josh. Can you mute the person that's just listed as phone?
Yeah, John, um, she's normally towards the bottom. Oh, there you go. Muted itself.
Thank you.
Uh, I, another thing I want to bring up is I, I know that the, I, I don't know what the cost is to rent out or to use the Derby field, but, uh, I, I'm assuming that's quite a bit of money as well.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, from the public who wishes to address the board tonight? All right, last call for public session. Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the public session, move on to public official session with Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Stewart, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. Before I begin, I would like to take a moment of silence for Lou Midah, a Public Works employee who lost his battle to a disease. Thirty-five years, he was the chief mechanic down at Public Works. Uh, Lou was a good friend of mine. I grew up with him, um, and he's going to be sadly missed. So on behalf of the city, I would like a moment of silence. Thank you. Spring has finally arrived, and so far, this spring has brought us rain and an earthquake and even an eclipse. Now, it's hard not to see all these occurrences as I sign the same sword. As you might know, the ancient Greeks often attributed those sorts of weather changes to natural phenomena, to the mood of the gods like Zeus and Apollo. But we know better today. So here's how I see it. All of this is clearly a sign of big things to come this year in Ansonia. By the end of spring, the city of Ansonia will own the entirety of the former downtown copper and brass factory space and proceed to put the property up for bid. New jobs and new revenue are on their way to our city. In the meantime, right here tonight, you will be hearing about three potential bids on the city-controlled SHW site. This includes a proposal for fuel cells, a steel manufacturer, and business incubator space. If just the sliver of the overall property commanded this much attention, imagine what will happen on a whole sixty acres opens up. By fall, the Olson Drive soccer will be complete. As my staff will explain, the project is simply waiting on the testing and removal of contamination soil. Imagine the economic activity this project will generate, pulling in players and families from all over the valley and beyond. And by now, you may have seen the work on our private downtown residential properties. The ATP Palmer buildings have been beautifully renovated, bringing over a hundred new residents to our downtown area. And you will he, and you will hear tonight about the proposal for further expansion of market rate residential and walk-in clinics to convene, conveniently service our growing downtown population. To circle back to the ancient Greeks, let me paraphrase Aristotle. This might be a first for one of our meetings. One fine day does not make a spring. Well, here in Ansonia, we have more than one fine day to celebrate this spring, more than one amazing project on the horizon. Now, I just want to remind you that, um, Earth Day is April twentieth at the Ansonia Nature Center this month, and I also want to remind you of the national, the seventy-third National Day of Prayer on May second at the Memorial Park, and if it's inclement weather, it will be at the senior center. So I want to thank Pat and Larry Bumbles for that. And as my staff will explain, there's a lot of fine days for Ansonia to be looking forward to this year. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, next up, uh, Corporation Counsel, John Marini.
Dr. Stewart, members of the board, uh, good evening. Want to give you a couple of updates, uh, more good things coming our way, as the mayor mentioned. Um, the first, want to give an update as to copper and brass, as that is, uh, first and foremost on our mind, the potential of the full sixty acres downtown for new jobs and new development, and the question is, when is the city officially taking possession? We're in the middle of ironing out a final wrinkle, uh, with the EPA. Um, as you know, the EPA had a lien on the property. Uh, they are not interested in pursuing the lien. Um, it's essentially null and void. However, the court wants the formality of having it removed before the city can take possession or else have a communication from EPA. So EPA has been very, very helpful in that regard, working with the city, uh, to be able to accommodate the court. And our next court hearing is in fact April twenty-second, so coming up really soon. And if everything goes well, um, with the city will take possession at that time. Again, no opposition to this foreclosure, just a matter of dotting the i's and, uh, accommodating the court's, um, a court's requests to, uh, facilitate the end of the foreclosure process. Happy to take any questions on that. Um, but that's a big one for us. Um, also, want to let you know that we have applied, uh, several months ago for a grant for the armory. This involves establishing the armory as a, a climate resiliency hub. And that is basically, at the end of the day, a community center, a community hub for our city that also has the benefit of being able to shield residents from extreme weather, the extreme hot, the extreme cold. As you know, uh, the armory has a history of shielding its residents, um, from, uh, from such things. Uh, we have walking in the armory, cooldown centers. Uh, it was, of course, even used as a vaccination center, um, so it has been a resource for the community's health and safety for some time. Um, we're looking with this grant to perhaps broaden that to include other ways we can serve the public in the context of a full-service community center, restore all floors, and bring that, uh, center back online for the benefit of the, of the city. Uh, we hope to hear something relatively soon, but I also want to let you know that this application is supported by team that's looking for, uh, at the possibility of establishing a kitchen in the armory. Uh, those of you that are familiar with the site know that there's a deactivated commercial kitchen in, uh, in one of the lower floors of that building, uh, was previously used as a mess hall, has not operated for some time. Um, we're looking to put that back online as part of the project, and also Griffin Hospital. Of course, uh, you know, health and Griffin go hand in hand. Uh, they have a history with that property, helping to restore it, uh, the, at least, uh, the basketball floor, uh, portion. So looking to continue with those two partners and more to make this a community hub. Um, we'll update you on, on that as it goes along. Um, also want to let you know about the Opera House. Three D renderings and a code compliance study are on the way. Those renderings and the compliance study is going to start to give us a very good idea of the cost of completing the project and also the possibilities of the project upon completion. This is going to help us attract further state and possibly federal dollars, and also, of course, possibly investors as we continue our partnership with the owner, uh, Walt Kjerzinski, as we always say, uh, very big component in this as he has protected this site for so long. He's the reason why it still exists and why the restoration is possible. Um, also, want to let you know that we have a feasibility study going out for that very work at the Opera House. Uh, that'll be going out to bid, uh, probably within this month. Uh, also, our Blight program, um, over the last ten years, we've talked a lot about our efforts to clean up Blight. Um, as spring approaches, Earth Day cleanups approach, and our Blight program goes into full swing. I want to give a big shout out to Rich DeCarlo, our Blight Enforcement Officer, um, to Kelly, and of course to Rhonda, um, all working for, or to push this program forward. They have collected, uh, as of this date, for this budget year, just under six hundred thousand dollars in the Blight program that, of course, could be used to further beautify and enhance our properties. Um, and, and that's just great work and, and great success for the program. And with your support, of course, it's going to continue. Uh, later on tonight, we're going to talk about some proposals for new, uh, business and new, uh, job growth. Um, some will have to be referred, uh, to different committees, uh, to be effectuated. Um, the, the starting point is simply here at the Board of Aldermen. Others, like, um, the lease arrangement for SHW, um, for fuel cell, we're going to recommend moving forward. So they're all at different stages of gestation, I guess, but very happy to see so much activity at this point and expect a lot more in the months ahead. Uh, and I believe that is it for me right now, but we have a lot of items to discuss. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the Alder, uh, Joe, Cassetti?
Yes, through, uh, through, through you, Josh. Uh, John, uh, team intends to, uh, strike up the band with a ki, with a kitchen down there? Is that what you're saying?
If we can get the funding, if we can get the, a project approved as a climate resiliency hub, uh, a kitchen, a community kitchen could very well be part of the project, and team is very interested. Again, it's a, it's a way to serve the community. Um, this is a great resource to have, but yeah, we need the funding. We need the state to come through for us on this one.
There's no intention to use the basketball court as a serving area, are they?
We would preserve the basketball space as a, as a basketball and rec for the children. Of course, as we already know, that space could easily be converted to other uses, whether we're having, uh, Halloween parties with animatronic, uh, monster robots or, um, you know, other, uh, music events, party events. So I'm sure that space will continue to be good flex space. If we can get some HVAC in there, that's another part of the program, so we could use it year-round comfortably. You know, some of these events in the summer, they were very popular, but they were also very, very hot. You know, we had paranormal conventions where the ghosts had to leave because it was just too, uh, warm and humid for them, and you don't want that. So we get HVAC in there, uh, we can use the facility year-round with modern heating and cooling. But yeah, flex, flex space is very important to use everything in a flexible manner.
Yeah, I think you mentioned the cafeteria area down there.
Hmm.
Would that be reserved for food only?
You, in terms of what the cafeteria is used for?
Yeah.
What else would you have in mind to be doing?
Let's, let's talk about restricting it.
I think we would definitely have, you know, a set of rules in place to make sure we get the highest and best use, and also that the city's able to use it when needed. You know, we have a great community, uh, kitchen at the senior center, and that's going very well. You know, we could see this, I'm sure, serving at times kids. Uh, big, big need for, for doing a lot for the youth in our community, of course. We're always invested in that. I could see this being used for that, being used through team. Griffin, of course, has great, uh, kitchen resources, great, uh, they, a lot of people are going up to Griffin for, uh, lunch and dinner. So I, I think there's a lot of synergy, we, uh, with the kitchen.
Lot of balls in the air, huh?
Yep.
Thank you. And any other questions for, um, Corporation Counsel tonight from the Alderman? All right, you got off easy. Uh, next up, um, Economic Development Director, Sheila O'Malley.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. Um, as John mentioned, we are wa, waiting on the climate resiliency grant, which is, um, actually a federal grant, but runs probably, um, there is some state involvement in that as well, but we are one of five communities that have applied for funding for this, um, climate resiliency hub. So fingers crossed, I think, I think the application is a s, a strong one. Um, wanna, I wanna thank, um, uh, John and the engineers. Um, we put a lot of time and effort into uh, putting the application together, so hopefully we are successful. Um, mayor mentioned, and John did as well, that, you know, we have gotten three responses for our RFP for thirty-five North Main Street, which is really a four-and-a-half acre piece of, uh, land that people were jacking for position on. And, um, that's a good, a good sign, and I'll explain more about that later on in the, in the, um, meeting. Um, with respect to Olson Drive, um, soil monitoring, soil borings have been taken. Results or data is back, which just tells you, you know, what soil needs to be disposed of, what can stay in place. Um, well, wells have been dug, um, and they are doing well monitoring. That data will be back in one week, which time we will, um, uh, have a meeting with the developer to discuss paving, surveying, soil disposal, et cetera. Um, I can tell you that no one is more anxious than the developer to get, uh, the field in place specifically before the summer comes. Um, and he's determined to do that, and we are going to, um, push everyone involved to move forward as quickly as possible on that project. Um, Ansonia Copper and Brass, um, EPA, in addition to helping us, uh, remove the expired liens on the property, they are also, um, we have requested some, uh, technical assistance. Actually, the COG has requested it on our behalf. Um, so they, they plan on coming down to Ansonia, to the Ansonia Copper and Brass site to give us some more, um, data with uh, data with respect to, with respect to the site in terms of cost for, uh, remediation and demolition. So that's a, gonna be a big help. We appreciate EPA's help as well as this, uh, DECD, um, and deep. So thank, thank everyone for their, um, for their help with the site, but I, and, and also with respect to Ansonia Copper and Brass. We have, um, ki, I'm not going to release the details, but we've had, uh, interest from two major, um, uh, parties, um, with respect to the entire site, um, to utilize the entire site at Ansonia Copper and Brass. So su, as you know, super important, um, piece of land for us and for our future and the, and the valley's future. So we're going to be looking, um, very carefully at everything that comes, comes our way. But, um, but just to get to offers of the, the size, magnitude, um, that we've received is a big, is a big deal for us. So a lot, a lot of interest in not only the four-and-a-half acres, but in the total parcel, sixty-eight plus acres. Um, State Street, the additional survey work that DOT required that we expand the project into Union Street and North Cliff Street has the reprofiling and the additional survey work has been completed. Pipe cleaning and CCTV inspection has been completed. Um, retaining wall is in design, and, um, you know, just moving along, not, not exciting information, but certainly moving the project along. The project's much bigger and uh, the grant amount that we were originally awarded has expanded. So, um, we are doing our best to, to get that moving along. Um, we are out to design for the, uh, Riverwalk, which is, which heads down Olson Drive and down Riverside. So that, that design, um, I'll be coming to you, trying to remember if I did or not, uh, coming to you with the, um, the firm that we select for design. Thank, sorry. Think, for now, that's it. Lot, a lot of stuff going on, guys. Any question, ladies and gentlemen, any questions or concerns or anything I can answer, let me know.
Sheila, just a quick question. You, you will be discussing the three proposals for the SHW property later in the meeting, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. Yep.
All right, I'll, I'll say my, my question on that. And just a, just a comment on the Union Street. You know, I, I think that, I know this is being required by the state and clearly the redesign of the grade on the North Cliff Street side is necessary and will add value. But no one lives on Union Street. And it, it seems like just such a waste of money to spend this much money on it. I know we, we do not have a choice in that, but I'm hoping that you might look at some other development opportunities that may arise at Union, since it will be a much easier place to get in and out of as a result of this, as a result of this, this upgrade.
Absolutely. Yep. Good point.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions?
I have one. Sheila, you have any updates on Franklin? You know, I was gonna ask.
Yeah, I did, I did. They did extend it. I know I had talked to you guys about three months, but looks like, you know, they're going to extend the project another couple of months at least, and I'll have another.
End of August, the whole summer, is what you're telling me?
Yeah.
And do you have any updates on sidewalks then? I know we, what we talked about, I think at the last meeting saying, you know, we were, we expected it three quarters of the way. I'm just, I'm just questioning because of the widening, whether or not we're going to be able to see it connect on the, on the, I guess that would be, yeah, the, the southern side of the street there. Going around that curve with the large tree there.
Yeah, I just want you to know that I made a request on behalf of the mayor and this board, you know, that they, they essentially do a complete reconstruction and, and not leave the road the way it is. And I don't know how you do a section of sidewalk and then leave the rest in tatters as it, as it currently stands. So one way or another, you know, and we're going to, we're going to push that issue. But if not, as I, I think I had said last month, we intend to use, you know, or to apply for lots of funds to finish the sidewalk walk connecting to Olson Drive. So all the way, the complete, the complete road, because it's, you know.
And I hate to be, you know, and I hate to be, you know, a broken record and keep bringing it up, but it's one of those things where right around that curve, having to cross the street, it's just, it's just a dangerous situation. I don't want kids coming back, you know, coming back from, from Nolan, having to do that, you know, I know, that curve is just dangerous.
No, and the plan, and the plan, as we had said, was to apply for lots of funds for that street. And then the drainage issue popped up and we, you know, now this, we just took a step back. We'll let the, let the state complete its work, but we're on record as having said, you know, the full street needs to be done with the sidewalks. It's their road, but have no problem if they want to give us some state funds, we'll, we'll complete the project.
Thank you, Sheila. I appreciate that. And I just wanted to give a shout out to you, the mayor's office and Public Works and everybody fixing the, the light pole on Wakeley after the accident the other day. Appreciate that.
Okay, Joe. I also want to thank, before I forget, sorry, Dr. DeBacco and Rich Bichera. Our, our librarian Jen Scheward has been running programs in coordination with the Board of Ed and has been offering like, you know, great programs for the kids. And the Board of Ed has seen fit to, to buy, buy the necessary books that the library had requested and, and then some. So we, we appreciate your cooperation and we appreciate you, you know, doing that for our library and our children's library. Chicago, nothing?
Any other, come on, Chicago. Come up with something.
I stole a thunder.
Not yet. Yeah, I mean, he got to it before me, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We visit you later in the meeting.
Yes.
Next up, Ansonia Police Chief Wayne Williams.
Good evening, President Scheward and members of the Board of Aldermen. I hope this evening finds you well. A personnel update real quick. We have an officer that's in the training academy. We expect him out sometime over the summer. And we currently have six open police officer positions. I know I've come to this board on multiple occasions and asking you, if you have anybody, send them to me and we will get them in our process to at least, at least test them and see if we can get them on boarded. So we do have six open positions. We did fill our dispatcher position. The dispatcher is in training now, so she's doing very well. We have one officer that's currently on late duty. I'll explain that one a little bit after, at the end of my report. I just wanted to let you know that both the DUI grant, we're in phase three now, and the speeding enforcement grant, we are in phase five. We just finished phase five, awaiting on phase six approval. Numerous tickets have been given out and multiple DUI RS were made in connection with those, those grants. When we first built the new police department, one of the things that we thought was important was having that community training room. While we have used the community room, some other agencies in town have used it for meetings. We are also using it to host outdoor, I'm sorry, outside training classes. Where in the past, we would have to send our officers to some of these classes and they run three, four, five, $600 a seat in those classes. However, when we host a class, we often work out a deal with the, with the person running the class where we end up with free seats for our officers. Last week alone, we saved about $3,000 in costs with officers attending classes at no, no cost to the department. So I just wanted to let you know that that's what that training room is, is we're already seeing a lot of benefits from that. That's, we've hosted almost a dozen classes that are statewide classes. So it gets the officers to come into, from around the state to our facility. And it also helps boost some of the downtown businesses for food, et cetera, when we host those classes. So I just want to let you know that that's going very well. We have multiple officers being trained as instructors, so we can host a lot more in, interior classes instead of sending officers out. And two of our new sergeants, Sergeant Castillo and Sergeant Canizio, are in the second week of their two-week supervisor school, which is held at Roger Williams University in Rhode Island. So we expect them back next week. I mentioned that officer that was on light duty last, last Friday. I'm sorry, Friday before that. We had two of our officers injured in a violent struggle with a shoplifting suspect that target. The suspect resisted arrest and assaulted both officers during the incident. The suspect was tasered several times and at one point was able to rip a taser out of an officer's holder and attempted to fire it at one of the officers, but it was deflected before it discharged. Both officers suffered injuries. One has returned to full duty and the other one is on light duty. The suspect is currently being held at the bridge, at a correctional facility on multiple charges. So I just wanted to give you an idea of things that have been happening within town and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the chief tonight from the Aldermen?
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Um, yeah, Chief, Danal Chick Drive in Beaver Street. Can we look into this? There's a stop sign when you go over that little bridge. I personally think it's kind of dangerous to have it because on a snow day or an ice day coming down that hill, you got to stop at that stop sign. Car behind you might not be able to stop. You can get rear-ended. And I feel that should be removed because you should have the right of way, in my opinion, coming down that hill and upcoming traffic from the other direction, coming from the old mall, taking a left onto Beaver Street should have to wait. I don't feel you should have to wait going down that hill. I think it's a safety hazard. That's my opinion. I'm not an expert on this, but can we look into this?
So I will, I will take a look at it. I, you're right, that stop sign has been there. Well, I've been here 34 years, so it's been there at least 34 years. I will take a look at it. There may have been some reasonings as to why. One, my concern would be that that will turn into more of a raceway coming down that hill if there's nothing that stops it at that intersection. But I will definitely take a look at it and see if there's any, any other signage or, you know, to add or delete from that intersection.
Well, I believe one of the reasons why there was a stop sign there is because the bridges be metal and it made people slow down so they didn't go sliding down. But that bridge is no longer metal, it's paved.
One of the, one of the first things we do when we either look to add or subtract from an intersection is we'll see what the, the accidents rates are there. So let, let me just take a look at it because if we don't have a lot of accidents there, the last thing I want to do is take a stop sign out and then cause accidents. Because obviously there's a liability to the city. If you've had it there for so long and now you take it out. But I will, I will definitely take a look at it and review it.
Well, one of the things I, I've noticed is when you come down that hill and you do stop at that stop sign, a lot of people take the left from the other way, going to Beaver Street, don't put their signal light on. So you think it's okay to go and next thing you go, you're going and they're turning left to go on Beaver Street and you're, you're just about getting T-boned.
So I, I understand what you're saying. You know, obviously that's a, that's a violation not to turn your turn signal on, so I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't use that as a rule to take the stop sign out.
No, I understand it. I just think it's a safety hazard for somebody coming down the hill more than anything. That's my opinion. I'm not a police officer. I'm not a, a, a traffic specialist. I just want to know if we could look into that. I appreciate it.
No problem, sir.
And keep up the good work, Chief. You guys are doing a great job out there.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Joe. Other questions, other questions for the chief from the Aldermen? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, next up Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Joseph DeBacco.
Good evening, President Scheward, Alderman. First, I want to start with an apology. Young TJ from Prendergast, a fifth grader. I did not get him on the agenda to do the pledge of allegiance. I will work on that for next month. So I apologize to TJ and my, my principals did have it worked out. They have a fifth grader from each school for the next couple of months, but I will get that sorted out so we can do it the right way, so we can do it in Houston, so we sound good. That's, uh.
You need help, Joe.
I know, I know, I heard it. We got it, we got to do our country proud. I, I do want to say it was, it's an honor and pleasure to help out Jen Scheward at the public library. It has been shared by my administrators during our meetings how often she comes into our schools and how much she does. We've really felt compelled to assist the best we could. So Sheila, thank you for, for noting that, but it's, it hasn't gone unnoticed and that's just our, a little way that we're trying to say thank you and how much we appreciate it. I did want to share that it was one of the most interesting weeks we could ever have to have an earthquake and solar eclipse, but our kids handled everything with a level of class and, and conduct that I was, I was very, very, very surprised with and appreciated. I do also want to share that you might see an article getting published right now. We've, we hosted a visiting scholar from South Korea. She came and was with us for six days from the South Korean Ministry of Education. I invited Mayor Cassetti, met with her as well, spent some time with us. It was a great honor. And from my understanding, the Ministry of Education of South Korea would like to continue a partnership with Ansonia. So that's unbelievably positive, unbelievably positive as well. About a week ago, I was asked to be the president of Southern Connecticut State University. Asked me to be on his Presidential Advisory Committee, which the greatest thing about that is I just met with a group of students on Friday. We're going to set up some trips to their exercise science program and their nursing program at Southern. And they're really trying to make sure that our students know what's available at Southern. Interestingly enough, Dennis Proto, myself, we nominated the Teamsters and Sikorsky for an award through CBIA. I, I believe the Teamsters and Sikorsky will be honored at that CBIA event. And as a result, we'll be, we have been invited to the governor's residence for a reception as well. So once again, our, our Teamster and Sikorsky program is flourishing and we have the support of those in the state. It's an exciting, exciting time. I do want to, you know, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I appreciate the Aldermen here accepting and moving forward the resolution for the, for the roof project at the high school. I have realized that everything for the state needs to be said correctly and the motions and resolutions have to be done in a certain manner for us to get reimbursement. So I want to make sure that we do everything the correct way and that's what we're doing at this juncture. I did want to share that next week is actually our vacation week. So our kids will be off, different than some other districts, but just wanted to, to share that after April vacation, it's a pretty much a sprint to the end of the year. So I want everyone to hold on and, and get ready. So that's the, that's what I have for you right at this juncture. If I have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for the superintendent tonight from the BOA? All right. And Joe, you'll be in touch with us regarding our, our next speaker, our speaker for next month, right?
You, I, I'll have that. I'll send it to Christina Molina right away. I'll do that first thing in the morning to make sure. And I'll get, TJ's going to get his chance again. I know, I want to make sure we do, do him proud. So I thank you guys for that opportunity for our kids to do the pledge. I think it's great.
Thanks. All right. So ends the, the public official session. We'll move on to financial reports, Finance Committee.
Make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct, Josh?
Okay. Motion to pay all bills if deemed correct by Mammon, second by Yaman, all in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. Secondly, under Finance Reports, we have the vote recommendations in the February, the municipal report.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to accept by Mammon, second by Rivers, all in favor? Opposed or abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, let's see. Thirdly, we have the request for refunds. I have the amount here.
Motion to accept as noted if deemed correct.
Second.
Motion by Mammon, second by not, all in favor? Opposed, abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Just looking for a singular motion to accept the rest of the monthly reports. Motion by.
Second. Second. Second.
Second by. Yep, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. And I also just want to thank all those departments that do submit reports to us. And I say it every month, but we do read them and we do appreciate them. Fire Marshal, Library, Land Use Department, all those, it's, you know, helps us pop, pop the hood on the city and know what's going on. So we do appreciate those, even if we don't have to vote, vote on those. So thanks. Accidents and claims, there's one claim, number 03241052. William Pettaway with the City of Ansonia, which is a pleasure.
Motion referred to council.
Second.
Second.
Referred to council by Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Let's see. Communications, two. First one's from me. This was regarding the appointment, proposed appointment of Frank Appleby Senior to the Ansonia Fire Police. Okay.
Second.
Motion approved by Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Communication number two is from Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley. This was the, regarding the 35 North Main Street bid proposal. This was in your packet. Do you want to talk about that now?
Yes, because I think we can.
Um, yes, because I think we can discuss and then um ask for a motion to approve uh one of the proposals. So we
I, I wanted to highlight just before you go into it, um because I think it's important. Um, that normally when we go out to bid on any single property, um you know, there's one winner and uh the rest don't get it. However, what's interesting here is these bids that we're getting aren't necessarily mutually exclusive at all. Um, and in fact, it's quite possible, which is why Mayor's Office is recommending that there could be an approval on this lease for the fuel cell. While at the same time, uh you could still consider those other bids um and still consider and grant and approve those other bids. The property is of course large enough to accommodate all of these activities. And that's, this is just again, a very small taste of what this is going to be like once you open up into the total sixty acre site, the potential for these projects. So you know, we've been looking at fuel cell for quite some time. Um, we believe that uh this fuel cell bid, which was the only fuel cell bid that was in fact put before us uh does in fact uh meet the criteria uh that the mayor's office and development office uh is looking for uh for a sustainable and impactful project.
Um, I have um have a question on it. Um. Do we have any plans on the uh, uh, um, on um the landscaping of this? The fuel cell because uh because I didn't see it.
That would come back to more, but I, I think it's a good thing to bring up now, but that comes into effect a little more once um the project goes through the land use boards. However, anything we could deal with upfront in a potential lease, I think should be dealt with upfront. So.
So, so, so John, that, that was going to be my question as well. Um, well, we, this is a, I think the broader issue of or question that, did, were you able to address the concerns regarding this uh self fuel lease that were expressed um uh last time this board discussed it. And that was one of them. Um, you know, the appearance as you enter the city, right? Um, uh, in terms of how this was going to look in terms of fencing, landscaping and uh I read in Sheila's report that the um infrastructure uh was going to be um addressed by the city through a state grant. Uh, and I, I don't know if the landscaping uh includes or, or the, the landscaping is included in the infrastructure, or is that a separate issue to be worked out with the uh developer?
So I think it's important to note that first, this is not the same project that came before us last time. So if you remember last time, we had a lease that was discussed in executive session.
Right.
That was turned down by the board, but this proposal is actually not the same proposal, not the same uh developer. In fact, um as I'm sure Sheila's going to start to go into, this bid was actually submitted by a familiar face. Um, uh Johnson Controls. And you know it best as Aaron Alibro. Um, who we've engaged with over the last several years to conduct energy projects for the city uh that have produced a great amount of revenue. Um, this is basically uh for being, basically proposed as a continuation of that ongoing project that we have with Johnson Controls. Um, Sheila, you can explain a little more the nuance here, and I believe we, we may also have Aaron available to answer some questions, but it's very important to say that this is actually not the same proposal before you from last time.
No, I, I, I understand that, but my, my question is uh in terms of the landscaping and the appearance of this as you enter the city, is that going to be the city's responsibility through the infrastructure improvements, or does that have to be worked out with the developer relative to our approval of, of this lease?
Yeah, I can answer that, Steve. First, yes, we did, I did have a, a conversation with our engineers. Um, first, I want to assure you that they said um you will not be able to see the fuel site on your way in and out of the city. But having said that, um planning and zoning uh and, and Alderman Lovinsky can tell you is uh responsible for creating or um ins- ensuring that these types of things occur, you know, where, where fences are needed, where landscaping is needed. So they can impose upon the project. However, I will tell you that um any development there will be done in a, in a manner so that it's, you know, it, it is presentable. This is our downtown. This is the center of our downtown, so we want it to be presentable. So no, no development will occur. That's going to just be, you know, just plopped in there. Um, we, you know, I have assurance from our engineers and we, we also will have um grant funds to take care of that as well as the developer has money to do that. So.
Okay, so, so I hear you saying that between the city and the developer, that site will be beautified uh in terms of its uh impression uh of, of Ansonia. Okay.
And, and there will be um a re- renovated retaining wall as well, which will look much nicer than what will currently exist on site as well and fencing. So.
Thank you.
Other questions on this? A specific piece?
Well, can I just, um, can Sheila give her pitch? And then we can ask some questions?
Yeah, alright.
Yep. So we did, we did receive three proposals. Um, and, and it's it's a bit complicated, but we did receive three solid proposals, every one of them. Um. Anybody that we've been talking to regarding this site, um, the, the proposal from Mr. Gads ha- has to do with a manufacturing um, a company that has a hundred jobs and is looking for a hundred thousand square feet of space um and to purchase building twelve. Um, Aaron, who I hope is on here um or should be on. Okay, great. It has a slide presentation on his proposal. And we did get a third proposal from Cedar Village. It was a very solid proposal. We are hoping that we can at some point accommodate them on another portion of the property. And it was basically warehousing space, but incubator space. So if you're a manufacturer and you need space, they'll be, they'll build it, they'll have space for you and move on to the next space as that gets occupied. Which I think is a um, you know, is a very uh unique and timely kind of proposal. Um, we are, it, you know, currently looking right now for proposals that will give us an end result. Um, that, you know, that, that will bring um revenue and jobs, et cetera. So um the two that you are, we are talking about now are hi- are higher priorities at this point in time, but um Cedar Village, if I had to give a, you know, a um a runner-up award, they would get it. So turn, turn it over to Aaron right now.
Thanks, Sheila, and uh good evening, uh Board of Aldermen, Mayor Cassetti. I'm going to share my screen if somebody could. Give me a thumbs up when they see it.
John, can you help Aaron with the uh post, the, the uh share?
Everyone can share the screen.
Okay.
So it's, it's not stone only, so Aaron should be able to get that up.
There we go. Okay, we can see it. So um uh just real, real quick, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you again for your continued support and then just give you a brief um highlight of where we are. Uh, there we go. So uh phase one, which was a energy performance contract, we're in our final steps. Um, we're do, we're scheduling um some additional work uh on the landfill project to, to get permission to operate uh and schedule witness test. So we expect that all to be wrapped up uh by month's end and fully producing uh some guaranteed energy over there. The Ansonia carport is eighty percent completely done from a design perspective. We're waiting for you, I to come out to the site uh and provide the final comments. That should be a hundred percent done over the next couple of weeks and we're um getting ready for those final designs to be able to release the equipment to start a construction schedule in June. So the project before you is a fuel cell technology over on North Main Street site. Uh, it's about a three point nine megawatt site. Which is basically going to offset electricity uh in city buildings with some excess uh when we finish the analysis for some additional off takers. And the program allows that to be virtually net metered uh on paper. So the, we produced on site uh and then that power will go to offset and essentially take all of the building's uh service charges down uh to nothing. And then there'll be additional off takers and those off takers will be generating revenue for the overall project. The project is self-funding and in year two, you can see it goes positive cash flow of forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, over the course of a twenty-year term, that produces a, a little less than eleven million dollars uh of capital back to the city. Um, I think it's an excellent project uh into the points that were discussed earlier. Uh, it'll be a collaboration to, to beautify the site and make sure that uh, you know, you guys retain the final design oversight on it. I believe this, this was shared, uh, shared document, so I just put it up on the screen so that everybody could see it. Um, let me go back one. And just so you know, this, this one-time payment here uh is capitalizing the new tax code. The ITC for direct pay uh fuel cell technology um qualifies for that. Uh, it just is not captured in year one because it has to follow after the uh, the site is up and operational. One of the other things I just wanted to bring the attention because we do enjoy this relationship and we're always looking for additional opportunities. Uh, there may be an opportunity, we'll talk to you in the near future about a smarter city. It's a real convergence of technology. Uh, information, community, uh, communication technologies as well as the Internet of Things. And it's a deployment of a five G uh broadband system that will be offered to the residents and local businesses for the city of Ansonia. Uh, that'll be inexpensive, high-speed five G Wi-Fi. Uh, and then it takes into the account the smarter city uh street traffic uh cameras uh as well as uh other technologies that can be deployed uh for air quality, water quality, uh temperature sensors and then sustainability uh that, that potentially some pledges to do carbon reduction. Uh, that's zero, you know, blue. Um, and this project right now in preliminary stages is, is, could yield about five hundred thousand dollars annually. So that would be a nice uh contribution back to the uh, to the city needs. And then we're still looking at the batteries uh and backup generation. That's it.
All right, uh, now do we have questions from the alderman based on the presentation?
I have a question, Josh. If Joe wants to go first, that's fine. See his hands up.
Joe Caffetti, did you have a question? Okay. Uh, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Aaron, how you doing? It's nice to see you again.
Um.
Good. Uh, thank you for taking the time of being here. I was just wondering, the graph that you put up that was distributed. Um, I was able to see that. What I'm trying to determine, and I see the cumulative cash flow. Um, just kind of break it down in layman's terms as to what the city is going to be seeing in terms of cash flow. Is that, you, you talked about a net savings in terms of the utilities. Um, I'm just trying to look at the overall value and just understand it a little bit better if you could.
Sure. So in year one, there's no outlay of cash from, from uh, from the city. And so that's, you know, in year one, the additional benefits that the project would be spinning off uh will go to offset. Uh, you know, the capitalization of, of the project. In years two through twenty, uh, there's varying amounts of benefit uh to the city, which in turn is additional cash uh that the project is generating. Uh, so you could consider that like uh payment in lieu of taxes, payments or what have you. But it starts at forty-six thousand, grows to ninety-five in year two, uh and then really starts to, you know, have additional cash outlays so that by year twenty, the cumulative cash uh is just shy of eleven million dollars.
Okay, so just if I, if I could just make sure I'm right on this, that annual cash flow is the value that the city would be seeing and sort of as in payment in lieu of taxes, like you saw, like you talked about in addition to the um reduced rate on the utilities.
Yeah, you would be seeing those, those revenues flow back to the city.
Okay, in addition to, and that's what I'm trying to understand and just clarify, you had, because you had mentioned a reduced rate in terms of utility charges. Am I understanding that correctly or am I misunderstanding that?
No, the, the reduced rate may have been to the Wi-Fi comment, so I, I apologize for that.
Okay.
The, the rates, the assessment of rates and the analysis is done, is that you're going to pay um the rate, you're going to, you're going to pay the same rate that you would have been paying to the utilities. Instead, that money is going to be sent to, the power is going to be sent to the, to your building, city buildings and school buildings, and you're just going to pay for the uh fuel cell project. We can, we could reduce rates if that was the analysis, but right now the the analysis year over year is that uh additional revenues that the project's going to start to spin off will benefit the city.
Got you, got you. It makes sense. Okay, so in other, and I, just to, just to clarify, it is, so make sure in my mind, I understand it. It's not a reduced rate. It's in fact the payment for the system itself and then the cash flow coming back to the city. So the city's going to see positive cash flow starting in year two on this project.
Just so I would say it just in this, in the same way you did and just say you're going to continue to pay power, but instead of paying the utilities, it's going to be supplied by the fuel cell project and the fuel cell project is going to take your electrical payments instead of UI.
Perfect. Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, just uh, you're based in uh Cork, Ireland, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. Yeah, we have a, the uh headquarters are in, in um Milwaukee, uh but we have uh, uh global headquarters in Cork Island.
How many places in the United States do you have where your uh Johnson
Offices?
Offices and operating this type of business proposing for us?
Yeah, so I, 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 maybe I didn't understand that question. What did you ask?
Excuse me?
We've depo- uh, if you're asking about this technologies, we've deployed this technologies a half dozen times in the United States uh and over a dozen times globally. Is that, is that what you're asking? Fuel cell technology?
Yeah, and by name, where, what cities have you, have you done this in?
I can submit the list for you. I don't have it offhand.
But it is uh, uh, is it deep? I mean, or is it just fragmented? Maybe five or six?
No, it's deep. It's deep, twenty to thirty uh globally. It's not new technologies uh with regards to um this technologies, whereas uh infancy stages in terms of the United States. Uh, the battery deployment has been big over the last five years. The fuel cell technologies has um, I wouldn't say slow to adapt. It's just been a lot of these uh, these companies uh have, have sort of changed hands and gone out of business. And so um we're gotten behind several of the largest uh players with regards to this uh technologies and we do, we do benefit of having some locally. Um, but we, we've got a lot more deployments uh overseas, uh just, just from the I don't know, just the adaptation overseas from wind turbines, fuel cells and solar uh went a lot quicker than we did here in the States.
Alright. Thank you. Thanks for coming to Ansonia.
Aaron is Tony. Oh, Cassetti, I'm, I'm happy to go check out that iron, Ireland site next month.
Me too.
And I'll report back to you guys.
Bob not going to.
Yeah, please don't, Josh.
Hey, hey, Aaron, I got a question. Uh, so just trying to think back to the chart that you had showing, it showed a, a twenty-year cash flow of about eleven million, I think you had said in with a, with a debt of about forty million, I believe, with the, with the nine million dollar payment in year three. I, I guess from a, from a cash flow perspective, you know, for, for the, for the cash in, is there, is there a potential for any of that to come up sooner, especially with a nine million dollar payment, you know, due on that? Is there any way to make that net neutral with it, with a, you know, a forwarded, you know, payment cycle upfront with the cash flow to the city?
Uh, yeah, I mean, basically, uh, from a finance term perspective, it has a net present value. Uh, yeah, I mean, basically, uh from a finance term perspective, it has a net present value of a five million. Two hundred fifty nine thousand four hundred nine dollars. Um, so it. You know, from from today's dollars, from from uh an agreement standpoint. That could be brought forward was that nine million uh direct pay doesn't, doesn't affect the project until. That tax year after the um. The system is operational, and so that's why you see that flowing through uh in year three.
Yep.
But the overall project could have a net present value payment of five, little over five point two million.
Would that be a, would that be a a single year, uh year one payment, or is that a? Is that structured over certain years?
That can be a single year upfront payment and then those benefits would be zeroed out that were shown in the table.
In the future years, okay. Um, and you broke up a little bit, so I think, I think you said it was five million and some change, I'm sorry, could you just throw that again?
The net present value on the, on the cash flow stream is five million, two hundred fifty nine thousand four hundred nine dollars.
Okay. Approximately, you know, almost double that, if you will, over a twenty year period versus a single shot up front, all right, got it.
Ju- Josh, I I had a question.
Yep, go ahead, Steve.
Um, thank you, so A- Aaron, again, uh thank you for uh considering uh Ansonia. Um, there, there's two things I'm just seeking clarification on. Um, is this, uh, is your enterprise considered a utility in this, in this regard? Or the, or the enterprise proposed consider utility?
Um, i- i- is somewhat, I'm I'm not sure I understand fully the question.
Oh, I'm 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 getting, I'm what I'm getting at is, is this a taxable or non taxable entity?
Uh, it's being proposed as a non taxable entity. That this uh project benefit will be the city's um that nine million dollar payment. Um, this project has.
It's a payment in lieu of taxes.
Well, then, no, that nine million dollars is a, is a tax credit, um so this is a a fuel cell. Uh, project that will spin off electricity uh and have an ongoing maintenance and the contract will have um guaranteed outcomes.
I I mean, I just, I'm just trying to get a comparison, you know how that compares to the revenue received by the city if you were to pay taxes? Ra- rather than payments in lieu of taxes? Because I I I thought the payment in lieu of taxes was a, was reserved for for nonprofits.
This, this uh, this actual site, uh the develop, we're going to be the developer, so we're going to design, build. Um, operate and maintain it. Um, the actual entity uh ownership will be the city of Ansonia. And then the city will guarantee, will be able to benefit the nine million dollars. And so the contract that we have, we have guaranteed outcomes of uptime and uh those revenue streams that you see.
Okay, that that's an important uh clarification, so thank you. Um, so the, the uh, so so we have one revenue stream that is essentially, we're calling payment in lieu of of taxes. And then the, the other is the, uh, could you clarify that it's the provision of electricity to City Hall?
But the 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 revenue that will go to offset uh the cost of the project is the amount of utility. Ability that is consumed at each of the beneficial accounts, the buildings that the city owns. Uh, and they'll be paying those additional off takers may be needed and they'll generate revenue for the project. So let's just say a non city owned building will actually be purchasing power from the project. And all of those will be identified over the development of the next several months.
Uh, in terms of the city owned buildings, would that include the armory right across the street?
Absolutely, and the police department, which, you know, we, we originally didn't, don't have a full handle of what that. Um, total load is, so the electrical side of things. But both the, the firehouse, the police department and all of the other consumers.
Ambulance rescue and medical service also.
Yeah, I think it's all of those city buildings there, that's, that's what I was trying to get at before, Steve, maybe I I made it more confusing than it had to be.
Yeah, all, all.
We're paying Aaron as company essentially uh the utility cost to offset it, and that is what is going to the debt service. And then there's going to be the net savings, which will come back to us in cash. Um, that is, you know, in that, I, what is that, the fifth row or the sixth row? That starts with forty six thousand in year two.
Yeah, yeah, tha- thank you, Joe, I finally understand it and Aaron, thank you for the clarification.
Sure, sure.
All right, any uh last minute questions on this one?
Josh, I have a question.
Yep.
Uh. Is Pura overseeing his organization? Are there uh fees that are going to pop up from Pura later on? Are they got their hand in it at all or was Pura just overlooked? So the reg, the regulatory commission here in the state.
Yeah, the public, public utility regulatory authority has um oversight over programs that are, would be involved in this. Um, but those programs are already set uh in and. Those programs are are part of this analysis, so. We are putting in, we are putting this project into the program uh this coming August. Um, and then we'll, we should be fully developed and and realized and if, for some reason, there are some. Uh benefits that aren't realized in August, we'll have the opportunity in January, uh because this project will take several months before it becomes uh implementable, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so um.
I need them.
All of our questions are answered, I I think, okay. So this um comes up on the agenda under communications, but there's also in a couple of sections, there's a res- resolution proposed. So we can return to that in about forty five seconds. Um, next on the agenda, we have resignations. What's that?
No, sorry, I was just, I I wanted to see if we could get in a a motion to approve.
I'm just going to switch, yeah, I'm going to do the, do it in order.
Under resolutions.
Yeah, it's the next item under, right after the resignation.
Gotcha.
Stay in your lane, please.
Well, Josh, one, one, one question, one question if I can, Mr. President. Is just the um, the second part of that is that uh the, as there, these two are mutually exclusive. Um, am I seeing? The issue, uh, what I'm not seeing is I do, I'm not seeing that lease agreement. Listed under new business, am I, or resolutions?
He's seen it.
Does that need to be taken up now? Because there's two different things here, right?
Right.
There's Aaron's part and then there's the, the, the lease to move forwards, can we take up the lease now?
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, but I'm staying in my lane.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the resolution was to authorize. Authority, bundle, yeah, bundle it all together, because essentially you would need to A, approve the B, the bid, right? B, um authorize the mayor to um X finalize and execute the lease, so those are the two votes that we need at some point in the agenda.
And then you, but you were also seeking in the letter, that's the communication number two, was authority to negotiate with Primrose.
That's separate and apart from this uh, from this project, so the.
Right, it's not listed anywhere else, though, John, that's my point, except communication too.
Oh, so you want to take up? Because they should be bifurcated, because the Primrose proposal is not having, having anything to do with.
It just happens to be on the same side.
So we just want to figure out where on the agenda to group um Johnson Controls. I would just group it all under the resolution and just bring this matter back up and and approve it all there. And then you could take a vote now, if you'd like, uh that, maybe that would be jumping ahead eventually. Um, we would look to negotiate with the, with the other bidder, Primrose. Remember, this is again for for to clarify, these are not mutually exclusive, so we can continue a negotiation with one bidder. And accept and in fact, move forward with uh Johnson Controls. All right, so while we're hot on this, let's, let's stick with the resolution number one and ball all that together. All constant control stuff, you want to, you want to make that motion, Joe?
Um, I, we have, I, what, what, we get past resignation, sure, that's fine.
So you want to stay in the lane too?
I'll stay in the lane, I, I, I took your.
And we just do the resignation.
Okay.
Stick to the agenda, all right, resignation, we have one resignation from Kathy Moller. Uh, resigning from the commission for elderly service.
Motion to accept the resignation and send a letter of thank you.
Second. Motion by Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You posed? All right, and thank you for your service, um. All right, now we're in resolutions, resolution number one, Johnson Controls, we're back in the lane, we're, we're exactly where we wanted to be.
Whatever, Josh, whatever.
Hit it.
All right, so the first thing you said, John, is you wanted a motion to accept the bid from Johnson Controls.
Exactly.
Excuse me. Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Cassetti, all in favor?
Uh, aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously and then part two.
And then part two is motion to approve the resolution for Johnson Controls.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Ramon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions, all right, motion carries unanimously. And then, uh, let me go, now go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, third was motion to grant authority to negotiate with print, with Primrose um upon. Successful completion with Johnson Controls.
Second.
Is that language okay, John?
So we, remember, the two entirely distinct, so I'm trying to remember what I just heard. W- we need an emotion uh for the mayor to finalize and execute the lease for Johnson Controls, do we, do we get that done?
Uh, well, I didn't use that exact language, but I'll amend, I'll amend your, I'll amend to your language or make the new motion, whatever you prefer, Josh.
Look at amend, amend.
John, can you repeat, please? I have.
Sure. Grant.
A motion.
Okay.
A motion to authorize the mayor. To execute, to finalize and execute. Lease agreement with Johnson Controls and all other related documents.
Okay. Got it.
Okay.
Nothing about Primrose.
Nothing about Primrose.
I.
All right, so with the, with the modified, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If those abstaining, all right, motion carries and then hit it, Joe.
In terms of, and then a, a motion to authorize um the mayor and staff to uh negotiate with Primrose.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor of that?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
I have being landscape photography.
All right, Janetti.
Interesting, John.
That does it.
Geography, that's good, all right.
Yeah, well.
Okay, second.
Joe, stick to your guitar practicing, come on, take up too high.
Oh, Joe.
We're out of the lane again, get back in here, resolution, resolution number two. Um, Rich Bishara, is he here?
Um. He is. Yeah, he said he would be, so.
He's down there.
Okay.
I'm here.
Guard, you want to uh um talk about this at all, or you want me just to read it? We already voted on this uh, what, February? This is the uh roof replacement uh grant that, that the Board of Eds is applying for. We just needed to tweak the language a little bit regarding the financing, is that correct, Rich?
Yeah, inadvertently, the uh fourth and fifth resolve was uh left off and so. The part about the financing and the city uh backing the financing of this project is required as part of the resolution. For the state to approve it uh. Through the, the building process, through the State Department of Education. So if we could just redo this with the, all five lines basically being resolved that we're. Going to do that and that would, I think. Give them what they need up at the state to approve it.
Okay, I make a motion.
Um, second, and just a co- one comment is.
Yeah, motion by Rivers, motion by second, motion by Rivers, second by Yaman, and then go ahead, Joe.
I was just going to say, the most important part is, is that those lines allow us to seek reimbursement from the state.
Yep. All right, any other uh questions or or concerns on this? All right, motion to um accept the resolution two.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously, thanks, Rich. Um. Okay, next up, we have appointments, you had a letter from the mayor, mayor's letter, April fourth. Um, this is regarding last month, um was requested that the mayor. Uh, former, form a um charter revision committee. And the letter pursuant to my powers under the city charter and code, I hereby submit the following appointments. For charter revision, one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, six nominees. And I can read these off, um. First nominee, Joseph Yaman, uh Republican, one eighty three, Wakely Ave.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Janetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I will abstain.
Abstention, Yaman. Uh, Patrick Sheridan, Republican, forty nine Elm Street.
I make a motion.
Motion by Janetti.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries, um, John Fettern, Democrat, sixty three, Hubbell Ave.
Motion. Second.
Steady, second by not, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose?
Opposed.
Aye.
Opposed.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna see.
Josh, can you roll call vote this, please?
Yeah.
Sure.
Chris.
Chris, um, there's a roll call vote requested on this.
Got it, okay. Uh, Alderman King. King abstained?
Yeah.
Hold on. Farrar?
Yay.
Adamowski?
Yes.
Tar? I think um I would try to reach Bobby. Okay, Cassetti?
Aye.
Janetti?
Aye.
Nut?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Yaman?
Nay.
Rivers?
Nay.
Mamon?
No.
Lovinski?
Nay.
Duranty?
Nay.
Schurt?
Yay.
Waiting on Tar, she gone? Um, yeah, I'm just four, six, seven. Text her one. Seven, yes, and five, no, and one abstention. Hold on, waiting on. Let me call her.
Can we move on to the other ones while you're, while you're doing that?
Yeah.
Uh.
What other ones, Josh?
Nominee Kay Janetti, independent, through Gracie Lane.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Uh, aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries, next nominee, uh Lena Lovinski, Republican, three Hoinsky Way.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Yaman, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries, uh, last one, Robert McDowell, independent, ninety four Route Ave.
Motion.
Sorry.
Cassetti, second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I did not second.
I did, but it doesn't matter.
Sorry. Second Yaman, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Josh? I have, I have Bobby. Bobby?
Did she get knocked out?
All right. John, is Bobby with you?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter. Your vote?
No.
Vote on the appointment of John Fettering to the Charter Revision Commission. She said no. Okay, so the final count is. Thank you. Seven, yes. Seven, yes. Six, no, one abstention.
All right.
Since it's not closed, I'll change mine to no.
You did change yours to no, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. All right, so it's a draw, seven and seven.
All right, so I would, I would recommend, uh, to kick this back to the mayor. Um, that nomination, and he could make.
Well, don't you, his board of aldermen present a tie-breaking ability?
I already voted. We're gonna vote twice?
And then vote of, and, and, yes, actually, and vote of, and backer of a tie. The leader can usually break that.
So, so Josh.
Or was sent it back.
So, point of order on this.
I'd like, I'd like to, uh, out of respect for the mayor, I'd like to let him have the option to do, do what he wants, he can resubmit the name, or he can submit a new name, or he can submit multiple names. I'd like to do that out of respect for the mayor. Um.
Steve was saying something.
So, so I, I just, just as a point of order, two questions. Uh, can someone change their vote, that's question number one. Uh, question number two is, is the, the issue of the, um, uh, chair breaking the tie, which I believe is uh, is authorized under Roberts rules.
Right. It is authorized under Roberts rules, I believe that, um, President Stewart's saying that he declines the vote, um, to defer to the mayor. And number two, changing a vote is allowed up until the vote's taken. Unless, until the voting is closed, and the voting, of course, was not closed.
Do you want me to call the names again?
We're gonna, wait, oh, you could do a roll call vote and then change your votes when anyone else votes?
You can't. I don't think you can do that.
No, Mr. President, Mr. President, if I may, you had mentioned, just kick it back to the mayor, I think that's probably the best path at this point.
Yeah.
Mayor's nominations, I understand this is, this is a, uh, you know, this is a strange thing, and I'd like to give him, out of respect, I'd like to give him the option of doing what he wants to do. Uh, be resubmitting that name again, or it could be submitting a series of names, we don't need to, we have six names there, there can be more people on Charter Revision than six. And that was the initial, that was the initial, uh, amount that he pushed through. Uh, I just, I don't want to, I believe by charter, that is complying with the, at the bare minimum?
The bare minimum is five. The board can't meet without five.
Okay, how about composition, does there need to be a breakdown at all, or can it be?
Uh, composition, um, is also affected, but I'd say, um, the biggest issue is if there's no, um, well, how many, how many names were confirmed overall?
Five names were confirmed, zero.
But zero.
Or for Republicans, independents, that's my.
Yeah, the, yeah, the composition is also going to be an issue because it changes the, um, the fact that, that the Republicans would hold over a bare majority in that, uh, calculation. So, essentially, we have to put the, uh, commission on hold until either the name is reappointed, or a new name is reappointed.
Or we don't have to do anything.
No, by law, we have to, because the Charter Revision Commission process was started. So.
It looks like it fell on its face right now.
Right now, it can't go forward, the board can't meet, so we would need to, um, come up with either another name or a resubmission, as President Stewart suggested.
All right, so, uh.
Okay, I'll make that motion to, uh, to kick this, uh, back, uh, to, uh, the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon, any other discussion on this? All right, I think that's a respectful thing to do. Um, all right, all in.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Stain.
One abstain, extension, Cassetti, all right.
I abstain also.
Uh, second, two abstentions, Adamowski. To be continued. All right, uh, next up, we have, uh, new business, there's, uh, four items, uh, first item is, uh, new business, um, in Sonya Economic Development Storefront Improvement Loan Application for Shafrio Restaurant. What's your pleasure?
Motion, don't we have a committee on this, I'd make a motion to refer it to that committee?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so motion to refer to the facade committee?
Second.
By, that's Yamman, second by Cassetti, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Uh, number two is, um.
Just, Josh, before you go on, could I just, uh, make a request of Sheila, I, I think, uh, future requests, I hope, will come with a recommendation of the facade committee. Uh, I think there's a, a lack of knowledge on the part of this board as to, um, you know, how much money is in the account?
Yeah.
What's, what's available? And also, um, what is the repayment history here in terms of replenishing the fund? And, um, you know, so I guess, I, I think we're just seeking information.
Yeah. Yeah, I can give you a break.
Form decision.
Yeah, I can give you a breakout of.
I, I sent an official request to the city for that already, so if that could follow the proper channel, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um. Number two, um, is Lee David, RE Chimney Removal Payment Proposal, so this is, uh, proposing a payment plan um, over a long period of time, this is regarding the chimney, what's your pleasure?
Yes, too low.
I'm just gonna make a motion to refer this to staff, I don't think this is.
Yeah.
That, that, we should get a recommendation from staff, or they should just say no.
I, I'd like to second that.
All right, motion by Yamman, second by Adamowski to refer to staff. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh. Abstentions? All right. Have fun with that, number three. Um, it says President Joshua Schur, that's actually addressed to me, I did not write this, this is, um, uh, from Rich as well, Rich still here, I hope? Rich Bishara?
Rich is still here.
Rich is still here, all right. Um, do you want to explain this, it's in the, the full letter, uh, is in the packet, but do you want to explain, um, briefly? Summarize?
Okay, well, the city servers, uh, I've been, you know, noting over the last several budgets that we're going to need to replace the servers. Uh, and so, we've been, or, uh, I think Kurt Miller has put some money in the capital line to help cover some of this, but it not, not the full amount that we're going to need. But in the process, uh, we're at a timing now where these Microsoft, uh, software server, two thousand twelve that we're on and, uh, SQL two thousand twelve, um, has been sunsetted and is no longer being, um, supported by Microsoft, so we're at a point where we needed to change the software primarily, and this, and the Vertex Blade servers that we have are quite old, and so it, it's my opinion that we need to replace those, and so we've gotten quotes from, a quote from Dell and from CDW, who is a platinum partner with Dell and us. Uh, for new, um, V rail, VX rail, uh, Blade servers that we will utilize, and the software. Um, you know, the original quote for the, the hardware was almost two hundred thousand dollars. And with our Dell discounts, it comes down around a hundred thousand. And because we're affiliated with CDW, it came down to seventy thousand. Uh, and because we argued some, our VMware software that we purchased the last time was supposed to be uh, lifetime software, we argued with that, we saved another twelve thousand. So we got the hardware down to fifty-eight thousand. And we need about twenty thousand for, um, replacing the Microsoft SQL and the Microsoft Server software, uh, data, data center software that we need. And in talking with Lieutenant Foulish and Chief Williams, um, they're in the same position, their software has expired. Uh, their servers were replaced when they went into the new building, but their software is old and is no longer being supported either. So I suggested that we include this all into one big package, and we've got quotes for theirs, and theirs is about almost twenty thousand dollars also. And once we get all of that, uh, the installation for the server, the hardware's on the city side would be about no more than ten thousand, so the, the net number is about a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We need to accomplish this entire process. Uh, and in talking with Kirk, because we don't have that money set aside, uh, I, I obtained some leasing, I think I got some two-year leasing, but I think he might want to go with a three-year lease, we're still looking at that as an option. Uh, somewhere's between either a two-year lease or a three-year lease. Uh, there's no prepayment penalty, but there's also no incentive to do it early either, but this would allow us to, to take this and, and equate it to about fifty thousand over two years uh, each, or maybe thirty-five thousand over three years, so we're, we're gonna look at those options, but what we're looking for is the approval of the board uh, to allow the purchase of this there, I believe Dell is on the government contract list, as is CDW. Um, but we want to get approval for the, uh, purchase of this, the, the contracts that we want to enter into. Uh, and have the mayor, allow the mayor to sign any and all contracts necessary to get this going. Uh, this special pricing that we've been working on for almost six months now. Um, they're up to a quarter end, and they gave us a real good deal, but I need to issue purchase order before the third week of April, is what they're telling me, so I, I apologize for the, the push real quick to get this done, but uh, we had some issues with the software, whether what was included, what wasn't included, and uh, we'd like to get this at least processed and in, in play, we have fifty thousand in the capital line that we can utilize for the first year's PO. And this would resolve an issue for both the PD and the city, uh, going forward, so I don't know if there's any questions on that, but this, this is where we need to be, uh, in the near future.
I, I do have a question, Rich, it's Tony, so through this process, you know, onsite servers seem to be a thing of the past, and a lot of, a lot of companies, organizations, municipalities are moving away from it as they move into things such as the cloud and, you know, AWS kind of stuff. Have we explored any of that versus having physical rack space?
Um, most of what we're gonna be utilizing will be, uh, I don't know what you're gonna call it, thin client. Most of our software that we utilize now is located offsite, but we still need something to run everything internally to get everybody out to the internet. And so, this will be that, and basically, data storage that we have, so, right now, tax software is offsite, finance software is offsite. Um, payroll is offsite, uh, cut, uh, at Don Clark, the software is all remote. This is basically the servers that will need to get us to where we need to get remotely and allow us to work when those are down, and have storage on, uh, on a local level. Uh, backed up to our Barracuda, and, and the data is all, um, uploaded nightly to an offsite for backup. So, yes, it's much less than what we used to use, but we still have our, some, some, uh, programs that require the SQL, our old, uh, finance software that we need to keep, and our, um, fixed asset software, there's a couple of them that we need to be here. We looked at the alternative, but, uh, this is what we came up with as a recommendation from our network and, uh, consultant, Yuckatech, who I've used for twenty-five years, and this is the best option at this point for us.
You, you mentioned the software for finance, didn't we just update that, I think not even two, three years ago, we replaced that?
Yeah, the, the visions is offsite, but the older software, which we still reference, it's got about fifteen or twenty years of our general ledgers. Uh, we still utilize that for reference when we need to go back and look at things. And that still runs off of SQL. Um, and so, we, we still need the SQL, we don't need the Oracle anymore, we don't need Terminal Server anymore, so it, it's a much um, streamlined version of what we've had in the past. And the only other piece that we're looking at is the data storage. Uh, and we're talking about bringing that either remotely, uh, there's multiple options, but at this time, we're, we're keeping all the data in-house, as opposed to out of house.
Yeah, you, you run into, like, security issues and everything else, too, a lot of the cloud stuff, it, you know, all big banks. Kind of a fan of moving it offsite, because then you, you run into less issues, less maintenance, less everything else.
Well, it, you know, the offsite, uh, data storage offsite will, would maybe help with, um, access remotely. Um, but, you know, there's still some things that we can't, like, the, the voters, they cannot access any of their stuff unless they come through City Hall. And so, like, we, we've had to, um, you know, teamviewer them into City Hall from their remote locations in order to access the state, because the state requires a VPN connection from City Hall to their state voting machines and stuff, so there, there's a number of pieces at play here, but, um, you know, we're, we're trying to streamline it as much as we can over the years, so that we don't have it here, we don't really want to be maintaining is, uh, the, the, the volume of software that we have in the past. So, you know, we're, this will put us in a much better spot, but we still need to have something internally running.
Any other questions for Rich on this, the details of it?
Yes, Rich, did you say this was a recommendation of your consultant?
Yes, we've, uh, had, um, Yuckatech, which is company that we've used for our networking for twenty-five years that I've been here. Um, and what they will do, the, the transfer from the old servers to the new servers, they take care of our network configurations and, um, security, along with, uh, the, um, phone company that we use, the Connecticut Communications.
So.
Marocchi.
So, so I guess, you know, my, my question would be the same as Tony's, uh, I, I just, I'm having a hard time with the fact that you can't get into cloud storage from any computer. Um, can you explain that again, why, why that's not possible? Now, I, I understand there's a charge for cloud storage as well, um, but you don't seem to be presenting this as a cost um, consideration. Um, what I thought I heard you say, it's more of a technical consideration of having some of your own servers.
Well, no matter what we do, you need something that's gonna get you to the cloud, whether we're hosted in the cloud or we're hosted at City Hall. We still need machines at City Hall that are gonna get us to the cloud. And so, this server basically will be the conduit that gets us to a remote uh, um, site for all of our software that we're currently using. Now, whether the.
The switch gets you to the site, Rich, not the server.
I'm sorry.
Right.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The switch gets you, the, the router, the switch gets you out, out on the internet to get to a remote desktop and to get to that, you know, the cloud where the stuff would be stored. Server itself would actually contain, you know, your SQL Server databases, your, any other, anything else that you're replicating up to the cloud at that point. You're talking about storage, you're talking about storage, so that's, that's beyond a switch, that's, that's an actual server, a database, something that you're setting up internally.
Yes, we, we have our data uh, local. And we have all of our, uh, Word, Excel, and all of our, 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 uh, software that we utilize, um, is, is owned, it's not, we're not, we don't use, uh, Office three sixty, three sixty-five?
Yep.
And because that's monthly charges on all the stuff that we've got going, so we utilize it internally, this is what we do. Um, and so, the data is stored here. So, can we move to, to the, uh, external version? Yeah, we, we might be able to, but now I'm paying for every person that wants access for Word and Excel, there's a fee for that, annual fee, monthly fees that go along with it, we're still using some of the old Microsoft Office two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. That's more than adequate for the purposes we use here. So.
Yeah, and you, you can still push those up to like a cloud file share, you know, without using Office three sixty-five. But, all right, neither here nor there, it doesn't sound like we, we we've kind of gone through that, and if, if this is the, the proposal in front of us, so, okay.
Well, again. Yes. Everything is doable, everything comes with a price tag. And usually, I've been trying to get as cheap as we can to get us through to what we need here and have our people be able to use the software effectively and efficiently. And.
Rich, do you, do you have a sense of what other municipalities our size are doing? In this regard?
There, there's a mix, um, some people use Microsoft Office, as three sixty-five is their email and their, um, their, uh, Word and Excel and, and PowerPoint and all of their, uh, office suite. Um, we use, Gmail is our, uh, host server for email. Um, and you, talking with the people I know, and the technical people I know. They've got as many. Microsoft users as they do Google's users. But Google seems to be more. Technically, less of a problem utilizing it for. Viruses and, and, and that kind of thing. So we've stayed with the Google side. We feel it's more conducive to what we use. But yeah, there, there are those that like Microsoft, those that like Google, and you can use Google Docs and you can use other things in the cloud. There, there's options to do a lot of it, but the limited amount that we have. For storage here, it's not significant. You know, it, it's a small number. And really, the only thing we're leaving here is the data storage, which is not significant at all. The bulk of what, uh, what we have are. Tax files and our assessor files and, and all of the different departments we've had have all offloaded. The other one that we're lastly looking at and don't know how to do yet, building department has scanned. Years and years and years of worth of permits that they want to be able to access online somehow. And again, without spending a ton of money, we haven't figured out exactly how we're gonna do that, store it and get access to it. And in the field at this point, without spending a ton of money. So. Certainly open to have a, a committee meeting at some point, but right now I need, I need hardware because this, this stuff has been. Glitching out a little bit and starting to fail. It, it is quite old, my hardware. And at the price that I think we're getting at this price point, it's worth taking that option now. But you feel we want to research it more? We can do that too.
What's the life on this, Rich?
The Vertex servers are about ten to twelve years old right now that I'm utilizing.
So I, I think we would want to be supportive of this, but I, I also think. From everything you've said, there's a necessity for a long-term plan here that is sustainable. That might be able to be done in reasonable increments as opposed to, you know, a Band-Aid approach that. You know, we're replacing something the cheapest way when it, when it's, it's no longer serviceable. So I, I would just encourage you to, to develop a long-term plan for this and budget for it through the capital budget and whatever increments the, the city can afford.
Steve, I think we also need to consider what's, what's on that server. You know, is there, is there? Customer or city or, you know, employee information that, you know. Compromised. You run into all these D D O S attacks and things that, you know, all these organizations and people do. People, people are slimy, you know?
Yeah, good, good, good point, which is.
Cheap is not always secure. Cheap is not always secure. In the, in this day and age, a lot of the people that aren't, you, you know, that, that aren't secure pay the price. You look at a lot of the data compromises that happen and, you know, they, they end up paying more in terms of fines and fees and, you know, coverage for. Credit Bureau coverage for folks that have been compromised. So we need to consider security.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a very good point, which is why I asked what other cities were, were doing. Good point.
Yeah, I mean, we've put a lot of money into our Iraqi security appliances with, when we did the phone system. And, and we put a ton of money there to protect what we have internally. And so I'm, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the security that we've got, that. You know, not that any, it can't happen, but I'm comfortable leaving the data here. I really am. I know what's here and I know what we've got protecting it. And so I'm comfortable with that. But again, if the board wants, wants to look at this in another fashion, I, I'm okay with that too, I suppose. You know, but the software is, is, you know, it's vulnerable at this point in time. So that's what's scaring me the most. We need to do something about the software.
No, I think that's a, Rich, I don't mean to interrupt. I think that's a great point for future consideration is to have that type of committee meeting. But I mean, what's before us tonight is simply like what you brought forward. Just the, the proposal here, you want some flex on a two or a three-year lease. And waiving the bid process. I think that's what, you know. Not to, not to, just to push this forward. I just think it's, that's what we should be addressing, but I agree with Steve and Tony in, in terms of vulnerabilities and a wider and broader discussion. Well, again, I think that's worthwhile.
I've been talking about this internally for a year and a half, two years. And trying to put it into the budget. And so it's not that we don't, we're making a snap decision on this. We've talked about this. And my network consultant has been my, kind of my guide and making sure where we're going. Could we be better? Super? Yeah. Is it gonna buy us anything really important? I don't believe it will. Spending a lot of money is not necessarily gonna buy a lot of things. And even with this, we still have the ability to pivot and, and move in a different direction with, with this new software, hardware and software that we'll have to do what we need to do. I would ask approval on this.
All right, Rich is requesting approval for it. Let me just read the, the requested motion as part of the. As part of the, sorry, I say resolution. The new business. The proposed motion is to approve the purchase of the hardware and software upgrades for City Hall and the Police Department projects as listed from Dell and C D W. Waive the bid process as these are on the state bid list and allow mayor to sign any and all paperwork needed to lease or purchase. This equipment. And all the details are in, of course, in the full letter from Rich. What's your pleasure, board?
I think he did the research and he certainly beat him up on the price. I think we should go for it.
Yeah, I'll make that motion with, I would just like to have a report back from Rich or from Kurt, just indicating whether or not they end up going with a lease of purchase or, you know, and the, and the lease duration.
Second.
Good call, Joe. So motion by Yaman, second by Cassetti. All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
An abstention, Mamon. All right, motion carries. And Rich, you for that? You'll, you'll get back to us on the, on the terms?
Yes, once we finalize things, we will get back to the board on the specifics. And just a secondary, the, the part with the P D, I mean, they're totally self-contained on their end. So, you know, whatever they need on, for their software side needs to be in-house. They don't allow their stuff to go out, outside of the police station itself. That was part of the consideration. But thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
All right, so next one, I'll save us some time. Next one is a. Property tax abatement proposal. I'm just gonna say we're gonna send that to the tax incentive review board. For review. I think we need to waste time on that tonight.
You motion for that?
Yeah, please.
To refer to the tax incentive board.
Second.
Turned by Mamon, second by Rivers to, to refer to tax incentive review board. All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Do we have any old business? All right, then all we have left is executive session. We have, now we have three items. Remember, we deleted number three.
Motion to go on to executive session.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Yaman.
What do you want?
Who do we need?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Marini.
Rich, we needed.
Looking for, like always, myself, Sheila, I would say Kurt, although I don't, Kurt is not here. He is on vacation.
Are we going?
Lucky you.
Motion to come out, executive session.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar. All in favor? All right, in the executive session, we had three items to discuss. Number one, consideration of bid purchase to bid to purchase W P C A from Aquarian.
Would you like to make a motion to set the public hearing for this issue on April thirtieth at six P M?
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Rivers to set a public hearing for April thirtieth, six P M. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? All right, number two. Consideration of bid, are offered to purchase or lease a portion of S H, S H W property.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion to take no action, Yaman and second by Rivers. All in favor? Opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. And number four. Potential property sale slash development agreement proposal, one West Main Street.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement for redevelopment of one West Main as amended with the removal of section three.
I second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Janetti. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to adjourn.
Josh, right? Josh, could we go back to number one for one second? We didn't put in, we didn't put the language in there that about a hybrid meeting.
I don't think. I, I don't, that's what staff will put together, a hybrid meeting at the senior center.
Thank you.
River and Tar, all in favor? Thank you, guys.
Have a good night, everybody.
Okay.